Okay. Good evening, we're gonna call our meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance. If we could have our Student Board Rep Hetvee Thacker lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may we please have a roll call, Mrs. Tagliafara?
Ms. Arminio? Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Beerman?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Mr. Chiarella? Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky? Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Gerby?
Here.
Madam President, you have a call.
Ms. Scott.
Oh, Ms. Scott, I am so sorry, I apologize. Your Mark is present. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at all schools on the district website, www.monroe.k12 nj.us, published in the Home News Tribune, published in the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of Municipality.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is our closed session resolution. Before we do that, we need to appoint a temporary Board Secretary for both closed sessions this evening.
I'd like to appoint Ms. Beerman.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, NJSA ten colon four dash six through ten colon four dash twenty-one, to discuss the following subjects: matters protected by attorney-client privilege. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I guess? Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. I would guess we would probably be in closed session for approximately thirty minutes. All right, thank you. Okay. We are back in public session. Our next item on the agenda is our approval of minutes. We have the Public Board of Education meeting minutes, September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, do we have any questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions or recusals? Okay, great. The next one is the closed session meeting minutes of September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Are there any questions or corrections? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio was opposed. Any abstentions or recusals? No, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chiarella. Okay, our next item is our Student Board Members' Report. Shavank is not here this evening, he's on a college visit. So we have our report from Hetvee, I'm sorry, Hetvee Thacker. Thank you, Hetvee.
All right, first off, we'd like to start off by recapping. All right, so first off, we'd like to start off by recapping the events at Oak Tree. Oak Tree has two scheduled Kindness Quest Laser Assemblies for October twenty-first, where students will learn about the power of kindness. The school's annual Halloween Parade is October thirty-first. Students at Oak Tree recently raised funds for the Think Pink fundraiser for breast cancer awareness. The school's PTA trunk-or-treat is on Friday, October twenty-first. Students in costumes will visit decorated cars and receive treats. The school has launched the One Connection mentoring program and it is successfully underway. Next, we're moving on to Applegarth. Applegarth School now has a school-wide dojo account. Parents are encouraged to sign up to follow Applegarth happenings. Parent-teacher conferences are occurring Wednesday and Thursday of the week, October nineteenth and twentieth. Applegarth had a PTA-sponsored book fair, which was held on October sixth and seventh. Oak Tree Week of Respect was held on October third through seventh. Students participated in Spirit Week, as well as specific lessons about respect. Each class had made a mission statement, including respectful practices, and hung it outside of the classroom door. Classes participated in read-alouds, drop-everything, and dance activities, and viewed cyberbullying awareness videos, created kindness catchers, and made good cybercitizen posters. Lastly, students participated in fish assemblies with Mrs. Shenholzer, our guidance counselor, to support being friendly, inclusive, supportive, and honest. Art tag at the school begins next week, October twenty-fourth for grade five and twenty-fifth for grade four. The PTA is also sponsoring a pizza sale on Friday, October twenty-first. The PTA-sponsored trunk-or-treat is being held this Friday, October twenty-first, beginning at six PM at Oak Tree. Through a PJ Day on Monday, October seventeenth, teachers raised funds to support a bike ride for Special Olympics. Additionally, the Applegarth School would like to wish a happy Diwali to all who celebrate. For Barclaybrook, during the week of October third through seventh, Barclaybrook celebrated a Week of Respect to promote kindness and inclusivity and to celebrate uniqueness and diversity, with many students participating in the school spirit days that week. Additionally, the school celebrated Fire Safety Month with an assembly sponsored by our local fire department. Firefighters came in to talk about fire safety, showed students the gear used by firefighters, and even bought a fire truck for students to see. Students were able to learn about all the different components of the fire truck. Barclaybrook will host parent-teacher conferences this week and looks forward to welcoming parents and guardians into the building to have great conversations about the students. Barclaybrook is beginning its Great Kid program, where students are recognized for demonstrating growth mindset, respect, empathy, acceptance, and trust. The first winners were selected last week and they wrote their names on the Great Kid Wall of Fame and received a book from our book vending machine. As for Brookside, on October fourth, Brookside has had its first pep rally. The third, fourth, and fifth grades met separately in the gym for about forty-five minutes with the Brookside SEL team. The students participated in some fun activities that reinforced four-school rules and the Week of Respect. At this event, the new Brookside motto, which was previously voted on by the student body, was revealed to be "Be your best self", with "best" being an acronym for Brookside Elementary School Team. October nineteenth and twentieth are the parent-teacher conferences at Brookside. Additionally, a PTA book fair will be held on October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. As for Milllake, in early October, Milllake acknowledged the Week of Respect by wearing sports jerseys and dressing up as superheroes. Students learn that you don't have to wear a cool outfit to be a hero. Throughout this month, students and staff worked on the Milllake Rock Garden Project and Mrs. Noonan, the school's extraordinary art teacher, and the SEL team helped facilitate the individual rock painting activities, while Director Selby and Safety Officer Aracaro secured a small rock holder to be the center of the project. The school is hopeful to complete Phase One of the project by Thanksgiving. The month continued with an exciting bus evacuation exercise, where all students and staff got to play, to role-play by jumping out of the back of the bus. During mid-October, everyone dressed up and struck a pose for Milllake Picture Day and Think Pink to support Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Finally, to round out the month, Milllake will host two fire prevention assemblies on October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And last and most exciting, the school will partake in a glorious Halloween parade later this month. As for Woodland, Woodland had a virtual visit from Newfoundland Mayor Percy Farewell. He discussed with students how thirty-eight planes made emergency landings in their town of nine thousand residents on nine eleven. Mrs. Shamra, an accelerated math teacher in the school, demonstrated a unique approach to her mathematics assessments, which consist of four different seventeen-minute stations. Stations range from individual practice to technology-based learning. However, one particular station is designed to provide higher-order reasoning skills from students' participation in makerspace activities. Student council officers have been selected for grades four and five. Students were required to complete an application describing leadership qualities, organizational skills, and student government. Students celebrated Respect Week, focusing on anti-bully spirit days. Students and staff participated in Think Week for the Mama Mayor Breast Cancer Foundation. Mrs. Cody and Mrs. Hoskins, grade four classrooms, shared their family mobile projects. In the middle school, Start Strong testing was completed as of October eighteenth, and the testing went very smoothly. On October eighteenth, after-school programs began with tag and academic lab. Clubs will begin in November. On October twentieth, students interested in Science Olympiad were able to take the qualifying test. On October twenty-eighth, MTMS will be holding their sixth-grade Halloween dance, and over four hundred students are expected to attend. On October twenty-sixth through twenty-seventh, students will be able to sign in for support our MTHS No Place for Hate program. As for the high school, on October sixth, the high school hosted a college fair, where a variety of college representatives attended and the students were able to explore their options. On October twelfth, sophomores and juniors participated in PSAT testing in order to further their readiness for standardized testing and for college. On October twenty-fifth, the Future Business Leaders of America Club will be throwing a haunted high school event in order to create a fun environment during the Halloween season. Under the Footlights Theater Program, there will be a showcase held on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth. That's all for the student report, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our presentation from our audit firm. We have... Mr. Allison from our audit firm.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here. My name is Bob Allison, I'm the partner firm of Holman Franny Allison and James Nameth, Nameth is, was supervising the job of this report that we're about to give. What we were tasked to do was something called an agreed-upon procedures. There are about six different procedures which we performed with regard to the business office, and this was agreed upon in discussions with the board and with the superintendent. We have a brief slideshow here that we can go through. So our initial procedures was to reconcile all purchase orders, all purchase orders and invoices for the monthly bills and general ledger. We were, I'm gonna paraphrase, that we were originally tasked to do this from the period of June sixth, two thousand and sixteen, to April of two thousand and twenty-two. We started from the most recent time and moved backwards. And if we go to the next slide, we'll see that, we'll go again to the, right there. So we, we went from, from the time of April two thousand and twenty-two backwards to two thousand and twenty, and we found that we were able to test over five thousand items. And we were, and that was out of a total of eleven thousand. The first check of the period was about check number thirty-three thousand and went down to check number forty-five thousand, and that was almost twelve thousand dollars worth of checks. We examined over five thousand of those, which is a population sample of forty-four percent, which is a strong number. Our deficiencies noted were only twenty-six out of that group, which is less than one-half of one percent. We went back to the administration and to the board and said, well, we've only gone halfway through the task, but our procedures are showing us that at least for this particular item, we are not finding much of a problem. There were some small discrepancies within vouchers, small discrepancies within late payments, but overall, it was pretty strong. The one issue that did concern us, though, and we'll go to the next slide. No, let's go back to the, to the timing. Back again. Okay, the bill date. We noticed that there were many, and really almost all of the checks that were written, were written prior to the date that the board would be meeting and approving those bills. There is a resolution, which, if you can flick to that one. Okay, this is it here. So there's a resolution that's passed every year by the board. This is not an unusual resolution. And what it says is basically, and I'll paraphrase again, that the business administrator is allowed to pay bills in between meetings, so prior to it going to the board for resolution, on an as-needed basis. This generally, generally, will tend to be things that are exceptions or emergencies. What we found, though, is that, that seemingly all of the bills and all of the checks were written prior to the bill meeting, prior to the board meeting. Now, it could be a matter of convenience or whatnot, but it certainly not was, it's certainly not the intent of what this resolution is. And in many cases, as far as we could tell, these bills and checks were actually clearing the bank prior to the board approving them. So we have a recommendation, obviously, that that changed, and I think that has changed. Let's go on. The, the next thing that we were tasked to do was to look at reserves. There's a question of what kind of reserves that there are in the school, because from time to time, there would be a budget that would, that would be produced, that would have the use of reserves on it, and the board wanted a little more specifics about that. Back up one, James, one more. And there's a reserve right now with regard to the cafeteria. The cafeteria has, has more surplus or more net position than the state would allow it to have. This is more of a phenomenon of COVID, because the district received, and a lot of districts received, a lot of federal money. And that federal money put them over the top with regard to how much that they're allowed to keep in their bank account. And it's about a little over four hundred thousand dollars. And my understanding is, is the board already has plans for this as far as using it for, for maybe some salaries, which are not being charged there to begin with, and some capital improvements. And that's a proper use of that money. The next set of reserves, go back to the reserves, is... It's easier to see it on here. There is a reserve from the Falcon Care. Falcon Care is a, is a, is a daycare, I guess, of sorts, that, that is a business-type activity. People come, pay fees to, to have services performed. In the past, it's been profitable. Prior years, up to six hundred thousand dollars it's generated. That can be used in the general fund, which generally just offsets taxation. And that was, that had been the rule when COVID hit, that, that business dried up, because there wasn't any services to, to, to be performed for the year ended in twenty-one and twenty-two. The year we're in right now, the twenty-two, twenty-three year, there is a budget amount of two hundred thousand dollars to be sent over to the general fund. Whether or not that's gonna happen or not, we don't know, because the year's not over. Another reserve, which has been used by the district, is the iPad Reserve. These are monies collected from parents for technology and iPad repairs, and these monies have been accumulated over time. And in the twenty-one, twenty-two year, half a million dollars of that was transferred out to be used to purchase new iPads. And the balance at the end of that year was about four hundred thousand dollars. So that's another, another reserve. Okay, so the last, the last task was with regard to the relationship of Monroe with Jamesburg. We were tasked to look at the tuition and transportation contracts that are, that are being charged to Jamesburg and to see whether or not the, that there is appropriateness there. And we went through the years and found no problems, except for the period of time of March of twenty and November of twenty, where we, where there was a internal agreement to discount Jamesburg ten percent of their transportation fees. And this was something which was not approved by the board. The reason for it was because of cost savings with regard to the transportation that was being incurred in Monroe. And the discount was applied to Jamesburg. Our recommendation there, though, is anything of this nature needs to be run by the board and the board needs to approve it. It was from April to November. Let's go back one other time to, yeah, okay, cafeteria, the cafeteria. Yeah, in the cafeteria also, we checked all of the contracts with Mets and, and looked at the general ledger, looked at disbursements, and we didn't find any type of discrepancy there. So basically, the two things that came out of this report was that the, that the disbursements that were being generated out of the business office or the checks being cut were being cut prior to the board approval. And this seemed to be more of the rule than the exception, and that should be the reverse. And also, the, the discount that was granted to Jamesburg, although maybe, or most likely reasonable, it's something which the board needs to approve and to act on and not something which is just internally generated.
Thank you. Does any board members have any questions for Mr. Allison? No, okay. I want to thank you for coming out tonight and giving us this presentation and for all the hard work that you have done on this audit. I know I speak on behalf of my fellow board members. When we take an oath, when we become a board member, we take an oath to uphold the laws and do what is lawful, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in the community of Monroe Township. And I know when questions got raised, I want to thank the administration and business office for moving forward with this type of an audit that is outside of our regular audit and look into these issues. And I think that we have uncovered some things that we know were being done not correctly, and changes have been made currently in the business office to rectify these. So I would like to thank the administration and the business office, Laura Allen, for looking at this and making sure that we do make those changes. And if you could, please, Mr. Allison, explain the difference between this type of an audit and what we do on an annual basis and what the differences are and if these things that you brought forth to us would be normally found in our regular yearly audit.
Sure. It's completely different. The, the annual audit is a financial statement audit, and that is to let you and the public and the state know that the, that the financial statements, the assets, the liabilities, the revenues and expenses have been reported correctly, at least in a material manner. It is not a compliance audit, it's not an audit about controls. Although, we do have a report in there about controls, but our task is only if we happen to notice something which is not in compliance or not in the best-of internal control environment. We are not required to render an opinion on it, and we have no obligation with regard to, to diving deep into it. This particular report, which is an agreed-upon procedures report, is a much more of a laser focus on the things that you were concerned about that would not have turned up in a regular audit. If you remember the chart before, we said that we looked at about five thousand checks out of a, out of a universe of eleven thousand. In a regular financial statement audit, you would never look at that amount. That is a tremendous amount of documents to look at. And even in the universe, if your universe in a regular audit was, let's say, two hundred items, you may look at twenty percent of that, or forty. Here, we looked at, at forty-four percent of that, of that universe. So this was much more of a drill down, and we looked for things like we just discussed about the, about the checks being cut prior to the board meeting. That wouldn't be a concern of a financial statement audit. The financial statement audit is concerned about, were the checks timed to the purchase order? Did it get accounted for in the right account? Is it properly presented on the financial statement? Not whether or not the board approved it ahead of time or not. That's not a specific task. We could notice that in the audit, but it's not one of the audit procedures that we would normally do. It's not, it's a different, you know, there are accountants out there, auditors, who have a forensic certification. And that's a whole nother type of task if you were looking into fraud, were looking into theft. That would not be part of, part of a financial statement audit. It's a much more deep dive in a narrow focus of an area.
And, Mr. Allison, there's one slide I know that we had seen when we were in closed session that I think we may have skipped over, the late payments.
Oh, yeah.
Could we go back to that as well and just show that slide as well?
May I just briefly, that, that the late payments, again, are not material. They weren't, a lot of them, but they did exist. There were a couple of instances of payments actually being made in the late payments with seven dollars and twelve cents to JC P&amp;L, four hundred and twenty dollars to Nestle. There is an ongoing late fee with Comcast, which was on the bills but not getting paid. So there, so if the bill was a hundred dollars and there was a ten-dollar late fee, the board was paying, or the business office was paying the hundred dollars, not paying the late fee. But there didn't seem to be activity to try to get the late fee removed, as far as we know. It was, it was just there. But there were a couple of instances of actual late payments being made, although small, but still being made.
Thank you. And again, do the board members have any questions? No, all right, we want to thank you very much for all of your work on this. We appreciate you coming out here tonight and taking the time to present it to us and also to our community.
Thank you, appreciate you coming here.
And Mr. Tagliafara?
Thank you.
I wanted to soak that in, because auditors don't normally get a round of applause, so...
I know. Is that on tape? I want to be able to take that.
I assumed it was a relative, I had no idea. So, there were some issues that came up tangential to the audit that in the views of the auditor were more appropriate for legal review than an auditor review. And the one that rose to the attention of our office and then brought to the attention of the board involved the payment of overtime. So, members of the public, you heard sort of a list of tasks. When the board officers and superintendent were talking to the auditors, they identified a potential concern with the payment of overtime. It was the view of the auditors that that was a legal assessment, not an auditor's assessment that was sent to our office. And so the question, quite frankly, was whether or not the individuals to whom overtime had been paid during the period in question were entitled to that overtime. Very simply stated, employees would fall into two categories as far as entitlement to overtime is concerned. The first involves individuals who are not in an administrative role, who work more than forty hours in a week. And the second is based upon your collective bargaining agreement. Is there contractual entitlement to additional pays? Probably the example most commonly understood is if a teacher has to cover a classroom, because there isn't a substitute available, but the teacher has to give up some of their free period to cover a classroom, they're entitled to payment for that, right? So there's the standards under state and federal law, if you're entitled to overtime, there's the contractual entitlement. The question put to our offices, was there anybody who would fall outside of those two groups who was getting overtime? We were able to identify two such circumstances. The amount of money over the period of time was not significant, but the bottom line, since it involves public money, is we provided insights to the business office to make sure that it understood you simply cannot pay overtime to people who are not entitled to it. The folks we're talking about were induced to do the work. They were promised the overtime, they were given the overtime. So there's certainly no question from our standpoint as to whether any employees were doing anything wrong. But so much of what this analysis involved, from an auditor's standpoint, from a legal standpoint, corrective action, make sure you have your house in order and moving forward, you're doing everything the way it's supposed to be done. So we have confidence now that the business office has an understanding, which I have greatly simplified for the purposes of this presentation in terms of overtime entitlement, and the converse, that if you don't fall into those categories, you cannot be providing overtime. So that was the legal issue. And then I guess the second legal issue, which was not originally on the radar when the audit commenced, but came on the radar within recent weeks, involved the accrual of vacation days. This, too, is clearly a legal issue. It's covered by a statute that was passed about twelve years ago. In essence, it limits the carryover of vacation days for folks hired after that time to the amount of vacation days earned in the prior year, right? So if hypothetically speaking, you had ten vacation days a year in year one, you didn't use any of them. You get ten vacation days in year two, you don't use any of them. Those are twenty days. When year three begins, you have no more than twenty days on the books. You're never gonna have more than... going to have more than two days on the books. There were, I believe, approximately 18 employees who had more vacation days on the books than is permitted by law. So the administration is in the process of letting those employees know that. Once again, I want to make clear, there's no assertion by anyone whatsoever that the employees were doing anything wrong. They had the days on the books that they were told were available to them, but in 18 cases, the amount was in excess of that permitted by law. So we're dealing with that in some cases, to the extent the employees are represented by a union. I'm sure we'll be discussing it with union officials, maybe union attorneys, but this is not really the board's issue, right? There's a law. You're either in compliance with it or you're not. Spoiler alert, we've advised our client to be in compliance with the law. So we will address that going forward. And again, at the encouragement of the superintendent and board president, bringing that to the attention of the public, something else that we are looking to remedy and make sure is correct going forward, and we are in the process of doing that, because it's a relatively recent issue compared to all the other ones that Mr. Allison and I have identified. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gagliardi? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allison.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Do we have any committee chairs wishing to give a report this evening? Mrs. Belcom?
I have the report for the curriculum committee. The curriculum committee met on Wednesday, October 12th. Present were Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Bora, Mrs. Ratner, Ms. Arminio, Miss Dressed, Dressed, excuse me, Mr. Moraldo, Terri Weiss, Mr. Arcaro, Ms. McLeod, and Ms. Ratner. We discussed sixth grade science. It was a presentation by Miss Dressed. Very interesting things that they're doing in science and the ability to actually do some interesting science projects that would be otherwise dangerous and life-threatening if we tried to actually do them in real life. So there's some programs out there, software programs, that allow the students to do these science tests that otherwise could, you know, they'd need like hazmat suits to do. Ms. Arminio brought up a very good question about the, does the software kind of tell them if they're doing something wrong? And it does. It kind of got, if they're going to make a wrong move, the software will say, are you sure you want to do? You know, it's a couple of different things. You can watch the video. I'm a big proponent of watching the video. Watch the video, and you can hear the explanations on how they use the software. You know, we're very fortunate here where we do have the ability to use a lot of different technology tools to teach our children how to do things and have some really good science things, you know, presentations that go on. So we're very excited for their program. One of the things they do is a cold drink lab. And then the other thing I thought was really cool, because I happen to be a roller coaster fan, is that they make a new roller coaster ride for a theme park, and they use a marble, and they have to make sure that the marble doesn't fall off, and it, you know, it's kind, to me, that's kind of a cool little thing. We didn't have those projects. But they do talk about, you know, units are safety and tools, scientific and process, motion and forces, laws of motion, atomic model, properties of matter, energy and transformation, and waves and lights. So that was what was presented, and that was for the sixth grade science curriculum. Then we had a presentation by Mr. Moraldo, who talked about our summer program. Actually, him and Terri Weiss talked about our summer programming and the different things that were done there. Sorry, those are further pieces. And we involved, there was a one-page report, which I'm not sure is uploaded on the website.
Summary.
The summary of this one-page report is on the website, but they gave us information about the enrichment program, which was supportive co-curricular activities. They integrated with the ESY program, which goes on also during the summer, which was a really good way to have an inclusive environment for all students to be having activities to the same, access to the same activities. The credit recovery remediation, left my teeth at home. 90 students earned credit in 109 courses, so that means there were more, there were some students who took more than one class. So there are four students, and I commend them, and I gave a round of applause at the meeting. Four students actually were able to graduate because we were able to do credit remediation for them. So kudos to them for sticking it out and doing what they needed to do to finish. The classes that were available were Algebra I, II, geometry, ELA I and II, biology, physics, world history, and then there was support for all ability levels of students who were at the program. So that was, I thought, was an incredible achievement that we made. The summer highlights that they gave here was the credit recovery, five student performances from the enrichment program. We have a music academy that we've actually had here for a while, very well received, very well attended, and they did some musical and theater things that they did. 1,226 students participated, and so they want to explore some new opportunities next year in the K through 8 enrichment. They want to start, you know, with the registration and getting the information out earlier, what we're going to do. They're looking, they're looking right now at what the break-even costs would be, because these two programs for the last two years have been funded by SRF funds. And so, you know, funding is going to be an issue for next year. High school enrichment, they want to do some original credit, credit recovery, do some jumpstart courses that are generated by whatever the interest is by the students out there, and maybe some college and career preparation for that. And they did give us a timeline of some of what they'd like to see with there. What Mr. Moraldo also stated was is that they have two, three goals for the 2023 summer programs, and that is to start earlier in the planning phase, refine the courses, and possibly give full credit, so like 120 hours of a class as opposed to, so that they have the full credit for the classes. I mean, he explains it better in the video. And then high school enrichment for high school students. Right now, the enrichment program is really for K through 8, so they were looking for enrichment also for high school students who may just want to do something else. So I'm excited to see what they bring forward to the curriculum committee in the future for future things and look forward to what's there. We had a presentation also by Mr. Dowling, who is our athletic director, and we, he was asked to bring us some information from previous meetings about all the different assistant coaches and all of the different sports that we have here, and what, you know, what we would possibly need to be thinking about and what he could present in the future for budgeting of additional coaches. We did receive some good information about how many volunteer coaches we have, and there is, we did receive a list of how many students participate in all the sports that we have here. As you can see, the writing is very tiny, but it does explain some of the things. We do have some sports that have more volunteer coaches than others, but they are people who are passionate about that sport, and they really want to see that the Monroe Falcons, you know, do well. So they're, so this is something that we, as a committee, asked for, and we're looking at it, and Dr. Lehman is going to work with Mr. Dowling over the year to come up with a presentation for possible additional assistant coaches in the next fiscal year, next budget year for us. That's it for the curriculum committee. Short personnel committee report is that myself, Mr. Chiarella, Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, and Ms. Beerman were present. We had received only one exit interview information, really didn't have much information. There was no reason other than that they were going for a different opportunity. We discussed some other things that we can't bring to the table just yet, and then you'll see the other items that are here for the personnel, on the personnel agenda for this evening. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Belcom?
I just had a quick comment, and we sort of gave accolades at the meeting. However, I wanted to let you know I had spoken to a former colleague the day after our meeting, and he had mentioned how he had worked over the summer, and so I actually had those numbers right in front of me about our summer program, and I had told him how many students had been involved, not just in remedial, but also in enrichment. And, you know, they were just really impressed. And so, you know, once again, now, because we have our public here, I just really wanted to show my appreciation to all of the administration and the teachers who were involved in that summer program. It's a really great thing that we're able to offer. Hopefully, we're able to continue. You know, as Ms. Belcom had said, the grant situation will be a little bit different, so things might have to change a bit, but I think it was wonderful that we were able to offer what we did to the students. So thank you.
Ms. Beerman, did you have a question?
I wanted to add concerning on personnel, that we did review the Assistant School Business Administrator job description as a committee, and you'll see that on the agenda as something to approve tonight. The committee did recommend approval of the amended job description.
Thank you. My apologies.
Anyone else have any other questions? Okay. Do we have another committee wishing to give a report? Ms. Fabiano?
I have the Community Engagement Committee report. So on Tuesday, October 11th, the Community Engagement and Communication Committee met. Mr. Chiarella, as well as two former board members, Mrs. Kalapanowicz and Mr. Ryback, joined the committee meeting to discuss fair funding. It was shared as to what the board has done previously to try to get more funding to the district. Things like letter-writing campaigns, testifying in front of legislature, trying to collaborate with other districts who are in a similar situation, and reaching out to Senator Greenstein have led to some but little progress. The committee discussed possibly reaching out to the mayor and inviting Senator Greenstein to an upcoming committee meeting. We also talked about maybe having a board liaison between the board and the township council. The next item on the agenda was referendum communication. Mrs. Chanley stated that there are continuing discussions on what the visuals will look like. The district will have a table set up at Oktoberfest this coming Sunday, October 23rd. We talked about the possibility of having a comparison chart so that community members can easily compare the current and previous two referendums. And lastly, we very briefly discussed the idea of the real estate packet. It was mentioned that anyone who moves to town is welcome to contact the district for information.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fabiano? No? Okay. Any other committees? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, good evening. Our committee, of the policy committee, was held on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. We had a very short meeting. We are not presenting a new policy for our first reading tonight, and I'll explain that in a minute. What is on the agenda for the second reading is the policy and the regulation for 2425, which is the Emergency Virtual Remote Instruction Program, and that was discussed last month. So that is on tonight's agenda for the second reading, for its approval for the board. What we did discuss briefly last week was something that the state is putting out, new standards for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. It's a revised regulate, it's revised law from the state that we will be reviewing next month. They had, the original policy was 45 pages, and they're taking quite a bit out and changing some things. So the policy committee, I presented just sort of a preview last week so we can take a look at it and be ready to discuss it next month. But I would, I also recommended, because I did find some things on the state website, that they have the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, that they say ABR, and the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act 2012 with amendments. And there are far more, the laws are referenced and can be found under the New Jersey Legislature and at the Rutgers School of Law. I recommended that parents take a look at some of these. These are, again, coming from the state that we will be implementing and reviewing and putting into our policy. We'll have that discussion next month. And I think that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, you know what? It's not it. Let me, let me just, we tasked the administration to talk next week, next month, about minimal standards for HIB. Superintendent Chanley said she was going to take a look at that and also work with the HIB specialist, who was not available last week or for this month. We are also going to talk about disciplinary actions and if they follow a student through the grades, so that will be part of the discussion, and the difference between an HIB, which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and the code of conduct that we have in our school. So those are sort of going to be meshed together after we discuss the mandatory changes that the state has made, but I thought it might be a good idea to sort of give a balance and weigh the definitions between the code of conduct and the harassment, intimidation, and bullying for the community. So we'll be doing that, and our administration has agreed to, you know, keep that in mind and help us through that next month. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Chanley, if you choose to just make mention of that if you'd like, if not, if that was sufficient, we'll talk about it next month. But feel free to say something.
Certainly. So we are hopeful that our harassment, intimidation, bullying specialists will be back. She's currently not available, and we thought it would be very appropriate for her to go into details. But we did spend some time having a conversation so that parents have an understanding of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and code of conduct, one is applicable to both. We talked about code of conduct standards and so forth, and we thought that perhaps we'd go into a little bit more detail, because I think it really helps parents have an understanding of, is there a difference? What is the difference? You know, where are your rights as parents and any concerns you may have with your children? So we touched upon, if anybody wants to watch the committee, I think it's appropriate, and you should watch it, because we did provide some good details that we could just continue to elaborate on during our next meeting.
Next. Thank you.
I just have a comment, yes. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Arminio for that discussion, because I watched the video of the committee, and like you said, as a parent in the district, it is very informative to understand the HIP and the code of conduct and how the action is taken by the administration. A lot of parents get into this on a daily basis with little issues or bigger issues, and it's a good watch. It's a half hour, 45 minute watch, and I think it gives, especially towards the end of it, a good understanding of how code of conduct and HIP issues are handled. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Ms. Beerman, you want to do the finance committee report?
Yes, thank you. Finance committee met on Wednesday, October 12th. The first item on the agenda was the Falcon Care ECE program reform considerations. Ms. Corallo joined the committee for this item to give an overview of steps being taken to enhance programming for the children. Additionally, a discussion was had to support initiatives needed to help return these enterprise areas to a more profitable position. Enrollment in the before and after care is down compared to pre-COVID numbers, likely due to families finding alternative means of care while services were closed, including a higher rate of people still working from home. Even though enrollment in this area is up by 60 children compared to a year ago, it is still down by 116 children compared to pre-COVID. So there is a recommendation to come forward for next budget cycle to perhaps add a fourth teacher to the ECE program. There's a recommendation to come forward concerning purchase of different software that would better meet the needs of the area. And also, when non-affiliate staffing is reviewed next time, considerations need to be made for job descriptions and pay to help support recruiting and retention and avoid costly alternatives for staff coverage. Please refer to the video of the committee meeting as well as the documents for board members in the executive content of the committee meeting. She did have materials she provided with enrollment data, historical data, and stuff in there. There's nothing currently on the agenda that we'll be voting on tonight. The highlight here is that there are going to be recommendations that are coming forward, so due diligence is happening in the background, and she's gathering information and trying to make the best choices for, you know, what to do to support the program. Next item on the list was the monthly review of the attorney fees. This was for the month of August. Total there was $19,232.93, the Oprah portion being $8,046.50 of that. And we should, as we move into September, October, start seeing that dependency on legal services for Oprah request processing lessening as we continue to onboard a part-time Oprah secretary. Next item was the review of the bill list. The number for a period from September 23rd through October 20th is $7,175,627.58. That's on the agenda for approval. There's also an addendum to that that came between committee and tonight for an additional $1,142,471.23, and then that little kicker of the extra $153.84 got thrown on there subsequently. So as per our, you know, current practices, the checks are dated for the day after the board meeting and will be sent out after full board approval, with the exception of those identified as needing expediting and communicated and approved accordingly. Next item on the agenda was a technology equipment sale through GovDeals. The committee was provided a listing of retiring technology equipment to be offered for sale through the GovDeals channel. It's something we do routinely. It's on the agenda to be voted on. The estimated sale price is $45,195, and the committee does recommend approval proceeding with this transaction. And the last item is an audit update. Ms. Allen provided the committee with an update indicating that the audit is basically complete. This is the regular financial audit. There will be some straggling items addressed between the business office and the auditors during the next few weeks, and the current anticipation is the auditors would be present probably at our December board meeting for a presentation of that audit. And that concludes my report.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Spearman? Ms. Ratner?
Sorry about that. Yes, just one quick question, and I apologize. I usually do watch the meeting. I didn't have the opportunity to here this week. But with, with the Falcon Care and ECE program, I just wanted to know, and obviously realizing space is still a very large issue in our town, but I know one of the concerns that we're hoping to address with referendum is that special education students who are now bussed across town won't have to be that. Is there any discussion to having ECE in the elementary schools where those students are instead of having, you know, Oak Tree students basically bussed over to Mill Lake and then back over to Oak Tree?
So she does have a bullet list on her, you know, items to be addressed to start being opportunities for more inclusivity of special education students and plans to expand things to help accommodate them. I don't know what she's doing building wise, but it's on her radar, and it is something she's looking at.
Does anybody have, Ms. Bor?
And I had a comment on the same lines. It was very informative. Thank you for inviting her over. The discussion was very fruitful. Gaps and opportunities both came out of that conversation, and I hope we will pursue this further till we don't have full day kindergarten. And I know this comes at a cost to the taxpayer, to the parents of five-year-olds, but we should provide the best service with the best teachers and hopefully in individual school districts, so we can at least aspire for that goal. I don't know when we will accomplish it, but something to look forward to. So thank you for that discussion that night.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, and I know we have Mr. Chiarella remotely, if you'd like to give the BGT report?
Yes, thank you. I apologize for not being able to be there, but I'm not, I'm under the weather. For the next hour, I'm going to take you through what we discussed on October 11th at 8:00 PM in the media center. So everybody just relax. I'm kidding. We had, we discussed five topics at our Buildings and Grounds meeting. The first one was assembly of cost estimates for projects proposed for Apple Goth addition and renovation, the middle school addition and renovation, the high school addition and renovation, your submission to the NJ DOE for the, for our 2023 referendum. The next thing that we reviewed was a resolution for the NJ DOE submission of major amendment to long-range facilities plan. So we received a copy of the resolution, which was prepared by our legal counsel, and this is a major amendment, so for the, for the referendum project, so it had to be, it has to go through the full board. We had an update for the Barclaybrook Art Classroom conversion to special education room with a toilet room, and an update on the stopgap interior classroom expansion projects at existing graphics arts classroom at the Monroe Township High School, and an update to the sensory room and self-contained classroom projects at the Monroe Township Middle School. The next thing that we reviewed was the high school proposed 2023 stopgap project for renovation at the general, at the journalism classroom, which consists of tearing out the, the current seating arrangements and creating a classroom which could fit nearly double the number of students. So we're going to, the committee's putting that forward as a budget priority for 2324. And then the last thing that we discussed was the Oak Tree School proposed 2023 stopgap classroom at the library. That was it. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Chiarella? Okay, seeing none, that concludes our committee reports. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum for agenda items only. If you would like to come and address the board, you have four minutes. Please state your name and municipality that you reside in. Good evening.
Good evening. Peter Tofano, Ten Catherine Street, Monroe Township. My, how things have changed. When I was on the board, we found out that Mike Gorski highlighted an ethics charge by doing people's taxes while being paid by the taxpayers of Monroe and receiving gift cards for that work, so he wouldn't have to pay taxes on it. Kind of ironic, but we were told by the then vice president, Board President and Vice President that we were not allowed to speak at that at a meeting, because we might get sued. So we let Mike keep his job, and now we discover that Mike's been writing checks without board approval. Mike's been handing people vacation time or whatnot that they don't deserve. And, you know, we're paying late fees, and, you know, those perfect audits really weren't perfect. So I would like to thank Chrissy Skirby and Karen Beerman for finally putting an end to somebody in this district that was not doing the right things for the taxpayers and for the students. And I'm very happy that we have somebody in there now who will do what's necessary to keep everything in order the way it should be done. And I commend this board for finally putting an end to the havoc that was reached in this, wreaked in this district while he was here. And I'm sure if it was legal for you to interview people that worked under him, I'm sure they would tell you that they were petrified to work for him, because he was very vengeful and spiteful, and I'm sure they feared working underneath him, which nobody in this district should have to fear, anybody above them. And that's why I'm glad that Ms. Chanley's in the position she's in. And again, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Tim S. O'Toole, Allison Court. All I could say is, wow. You know, it's been years now that we've been looking for this type of transparency, you know, all knowing that there's been an issue with Mr. Gorski for the last how many years? And to find out that Mr. Allison and his audit firm could come and expose all this to the public makes it real now. It makes it real to everybody. And those who say, oh, Mr. Gorski is my friend, there's a difference between friend and business. This is business, and you're talking 30-plus thousand taxpayers here in Monroe, I believe, who had to put up with that. And, you know, I just want to thank the board. I just, I find it really disturbing to know that this man was in the position he was in, making the kind of money he was making and doing the things he was doing. It really, it really shows that this board is all about transparency. They're all about doing the right thing to, for the children first and the taxpayer. People are struggling out there. And for former business administrator, Mr. Gorski, to just give people overtime at, at his discretion or pay bills, okay, without board approval is disturbing to say the least. You know, on top of all these issues as well we heard tonight, we didn't hear about the mishandling of Oprah requests. I've been part of that, trying to attain Oprah's from Mr. Gorski when he was here, and I didn't receive a lot of them I should have. And with this new board, I'm seeing transparency even on the Oprah side. You're cleaning up the mess, Ms. Skirby, and the board. You're cleaning up the mess that was last year, a year before. And I'm not sitting here beating up anybody that was on the board prior to, okay? Because you're all doing this at, for, for no money. But I could tell you, I love what I'm seeing now. And it's, it's very comforting to know that as a taxpayer in this town, we finally have a board up here who is looking to do the right thing and not just take care of their friends and their friends' friends. With that said as well, I want to thank, or I want to actually congratulate our new Director of Security, Mrs. Selby. I've heard nothing but great things about how you're conducting business in school. A lot of parents I speak to at various clubs I go to have said nothing but great things about you, how you're conducting yourself with the children, with the administration, with the parents, how you're doing traffic. It's just, it's very refreshing, because prior to, that's what we had was issues with traffic, and it was just, it was a mess. So we welcome you, Mrs. Selby, and, and thanks for becoming part of Monroe. Thank you very much, board.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Pradeep Milam, Fort Jake Place, Monroe Township. Finding out wrongdoing and exposing him in a public is a different thing. So what are we doing when he was on vacation for six months or like five-plus months and we paid for him? When he's on suspension with pay, we paid for him. So are we planning to recover the money? Or are we going to punish him in any way, financially especially, for the wrongdoings? Or he'll just get a, the reprimand, and then he'll just get free jail card? I don't know. So apart from Gorski, so I have a few questions on the referendum that is, you guys are planning. So what is the final estimated cost that we submitted to DOE?
If you have multiple questions, if you could let us know, and then we will answer them.
Okay, the cost is one question. The second question is like, are we doing like a, like a multiple questions in the ballot, or are we doing like a single question? Are we approving this referendum? Or are we doing a high school and middle school and other schools as like three different options? So that's all my questions.
Okay. Mrs. Chanley, if you'd like to address the referendum questions?
So thank you for asking the question, and in the back we have visuals, so that people could actually see what the referendum consists of. It will be one question, and the total cost currently is $103 million. And at this time, we are waiting, we are waiting the financial amount that will be given to us from the state. So we do not have that number. So that 103 is currently the total cost for the 17 classrooms on the middle school, the 17 classrooms on the high school, and the rejuvenation and revamping of Apple Goth and the addition onto Apple Goth as well.
And as far as the questions that you raised about our former business administrator, I'm going to ask Mr. Gagliardi to address that question.
Well, I'm not going to speak about any current or former employee. I'm going to answer the question generically. So as far as any occasion when a school employee is suspended, the board is required to suspend them only with pay unless they have been indicted or they've been served with tenure charges. And only under those circumstances can you suspend an employee without pay. In the case of tenure charges, that can only be for 120 days, and then you have to resume paying the employee anyway. So as a matter of law, the board's ability to suspend employees without pay is very, very limited. As far as pursuing a civil claim against an employee for, for any type of improper action, it's a very circular activity. So school employees, also as a matter of state law, are entitled to indemnification and a defense in a civil matter arising from their official duties. So if a school district were to file a civil suit against a school employee, which you don't see, and here's the reason why you don't see it. If they were to file such a suit, the school district would be required to hire an attorney for that employee. And if there was civil liability visited upon an employee because of something they did or didn't do in the course of their official responsibilities, the board would have to pay the damages. Now, the board may or may not have insurance, but as you can see, it's, it's a circular activity. So the questions that you ask are very commonly asked because they make a whole lot of sense, but state law greatly confines a school district's ability to consider the sort of things that you were raising when it comes to any existing or former employee. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So what I interpret from your answer is like, if you sue, we have to, like, the school district has to pay for our attorney and his attorney, and the outcome might not be good and spending that much money. One final question. How much we paid for this kind of audit that they performed, HFA?
The total cost, Mrs. Chanley, do you have that?
It was below the original amount, and if you'd like, you can either reach out to me, call me, or email me. We did have it in the original approval. Do you have it in front of you? I, I didn't know.
I think, I just rolled past it. Hang on a second.
There was an actual amount that was given in advance to show transparency and respect, of course, for fiduciary responsibility, and I know that we did not exceed that. As a matter of fact, we went below.
I see $20,000.
That was, that was a payment, just.
Ms. Allen? Do you have that amount in front of you?
I believe it was $40,000.
That sounds correct.
We might have paid about $30,000. I believe it was for $40,000, the contract, and it came maybe to $34,000, the $20,000.
That does sound correct. I, yes, I do believe it was a maximum of $40,000 to, without going any further without board approval, and I believe that the amount was less than the $40,000. That does sound correct. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. Thank you, Ms. Belga.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak? Good evening.
Hi. Gail Dupain, 3560 Old Nassau Road. Just a few questions. I saw on the list of subs, I was just curious on what your hourly rate is for the subs in Monroe and if you're comparable to other towns in the Middlesex County? Because it's very hard getting subs lately for, my daughter's a teacher in New Brunswick. She was out with COVID, and they couldn't find subs. So I know it's very hard. That's one. Regarding volunteer coaches, do you provide any kind of insurance to cover these volunteer coaches? Here's another question. On page, well, it's letter G, 19, Assistant School Business Administrator, new position. There's no salary listed next to it. Has a salary been negotiated for that? And are you interviewing for that position right now? And then also on your board goal number two, the ECE program. I know in other districts, the ECE, especially East Brunswick, just applied for a grant to cover the cost for the parents and the transportation for the ECE program. Is Monroe going to go ahead and try to file for that grant so that the parents, it's tough enough getting, you have to educate children ages three to 21 if they have an IEP. And it's tough enough for these parents to try to get other outside help for their children if they can't afford to come and pay for the ECE program here in Monroe. So those are my questions.
Okay, well, so we'll go through them one by one. The sub rate, if you will recall, the Board of Education did approve an increase to our sub rates to become more competitive with our surrounding districts. And we have seen an increase in our subs. We were, we did need to, exactly like you said, we need to become competitive so that we would keep our subs and we would attract our subs to stay here, because we were seeing substitute teachers that were going to other districts because they were paying higher. So yes, we did do that, and then.
But what, what is your sub rate right now?
The rate currently?
So when we extended it, we extended it based upon degree certification and so forth, and we have specific rates. Off the top of my head, one is either, he's going to look it up, either one is 145, and then they come down in this three tiers. I would also, if I may add to this, we also, I'd like to, you know, compliment our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Christie. She's been working very diligently to narrow the timeframe that it takes to get a sub approved. So we're very excited about that, because now what's happening is we've been able to make a quicker turnaround, very similar to the way we approve our regular staff, and we actually had four subs coming into apply that I actually saw in the actual building. So we're very pleased, and our sub coverage has been very good since we've been able to raise the prices.
Okay, good.
Sure.
So current rates with a county sub certificate, it's $130 a day. With a bachelor's degree or higher, it's $135 a day. And with a teaching certificate, standard, a CEAS or a CE, it's $140 a day.
Thank you. As far as the volunteer coaches, Dr. Lehman, do you want to answer that question about, do we have insurance for those?
So process for onboarding volunteer coach, they go through, every volunteer coach has a substitute certificate, and going through that, they get cert, fingerprinted, background checks, so they, they meet all of the criteria that a substitute would need. And then once they come onboard, they're under the umbrella of our district insurance policy. So yes.
Okay, thank you. And as far as our job description for business administrator, assistant business manager?
Certainly. So we took an opportunity and we worked collaboratively, myself, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Allen, who's the current acting business administrator, and Ms. Christie, Director of Human Resources, to look at the Assistant Business Administrator's job description, which had not been updated since 2005. And we looked at what we thought was appropriate and applicable. And then we brought it to personnel and they did agree to move it forward. And then, of course, get shared with the whole board and it would be approved this evening. So that is, there is no salary as there wouldn't be because there, it goes by based upon candidates and applicants. We currently have a anticipated Assistant Business Administrator posting out and we have not interviewed anybody as of yet. And then the salary, of course, would come based upon experience and credentials.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
And as far as the grant for the ECE program, Dr. Lehman?
Transportation-specific, ECE students are transported via the normal transportation routing. So they would take their bus to their primary elementary school, say it's Oak Tree. Then they would either do their half-day kindergarten or they would get, and once they're done with their half-day kindergarten, they get transported to our ECE program via the district busing. They engage in ECE, they hop back on a bus again, they go back to their home school and then they're transported home via our regular busing. So parent transportation for ECE is, if they choose to come and pick up their child early, but they're picked up, it's door-to-door essentially. We're just filling the gap for the extra half-day kindergarten side of things.
So your ECE is only, is only half-day?
So ECE fills the gap of the kindergarten. So some of the elementary schools, their students go to ECE in the morning, some of them go in the afternoon, and that's all transportation-specific.
Right, but what about the third graders, your, not third graders, three-year-olds? The three-year-old?
So our pre-K programs, so pre-K programs are door-to-door. They are either half-day or a full-day program and they're door-to-door service. We do have the Working with Children program at the high school. Again, that's like a pay service. They work the high school students. That's a parent drop-off piece. But all of our preschool programs are busing.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Madam President, could you have Dr. Lehman just say what ECE is? It's been requested by the? Oh, ECE is Early Child Care Enrichment.
Right, just for the community that always requests the full name.
Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Olewski, 50 Mayberry Avenue, here in Monroe Township. I've got three questions. First question is actually from someone else in the audience. I guess the question was, can you actually consider for the first public forum, allowing the public to actually ask questions of a general nature and not necessarily agenda items? It seems like there aren't that many questions being asked even at this point in time. And gee, that would help people and not having to stay until, I know, the time you all folks stayed, yeah, till 11 o'clock, 11:30. And I appreciate all the work you guys do. Now, my question I wanted to ask, is it possible that you folks could actually post maybe on the website? I guess what it's called is a summary of the Long Range Facilities Plan Major Amendment. Anyway, it's a document that apparently goes along with the LFRP when that gets submitted to the state. And I've seen that, I guess, for other major amendments. And I thought that'd be a nice summary to post on the website. No expert on the topic, but I gather the LRFP is some, maybe somewhat archaic computer program that Jerry Tagg actually inputs into. So my thought is, hey, if there really is a summary in front of that that you submit to the state, think about maybe putting it on the website for all of us to see. And I'm glad somebody mentioned the infrastructure needs. Very, very happy with the, at least one board goal that deals with studying, addressing the infrastructure backlog in the district. Long time in coming. I know it's not going to be easy. Obviously, infrastructure repairs, replacements cost money. And of course, I know that means finding that money. But I'm glad that at least it's there now. It's going to be talked about, addressed, shared with the community, and people understand how, but serious the situation is, not only with the overcrowding, but also with the condition of the schools. And that's it.
Yes, and as we describe all of our acronyms, LRFP is Long Range Facilities Plan. And I can ask Mrs. Chanley if you will ask our Director of Facilities, Jerry Tagg, if that is something that we can upload to the website. I think that would be an addition that we could put up there as well. As far as the public forum, that is part of our board policy. And we can ask our policy chairperson, Ms. Arminio, if maybe she will consider putting that on an upcoming policy committee agenda to maybe discuss. But that is currently how the policy is written, that the first public forum is for agenda items only. But I do, I do sympathize because for many, many years, I did sit in the audience and, you know, public participation is very important in a democracy. And we welcome the public to come here and to come up to the podium during public forum and speak. So I think that will be a great discussion that we could have in policy and possibly remove that, agenda items only.
Okay, thank you very much.
And did I, was that, was that all of them?
Yes, it was those two questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olewski. Anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Ramranath, 6 Ovin Strive. I'll be very brief. One is really seeing the pictures on the back of the middle school and the, I think, the Applegoth School. It's beautiful. It's coming out very well. So a suggestion is just to try to publicize that and share it with the members of the public so that they can get excited what's coming out, coming along. And just one question I had, in terms of the referendum, is everything going on track? Will it be in April? How are things progressing for the referendum?
Currently, we are on track for April 18, 2023. Mr. Tagg submitted what he needed to submit at this point to the Department of Education. We're awaiting approval for that. He has advised during BGNT that he is on schedule. And as soon as he gets the approvals, he will go on to the next part of the process. But he does anticipate and hopeful that we will absolutely make that date. So that is what we're working toward and focusing on.
Thank you. Yeah, really looking forward. And again, let's try to communicate, even if it's necessary over-communicate so the public is informed, educated, and particularly if you try to contrast with the past referendums and how this one is really addressing what the public needs or what our children need, would really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Adam Elias, Monroe Township. I was glad to hear that in one of the committee meetings in the last couple of weeks, we talked about fair funding that was renewed as an issue. God knows I've come up here how many times to talk about the issue of fair funding. This past Saturday at the Monroe Township Green Fair, I had the long overdue pleasure of meeting Senator Linda Greenstein. I had a nice little conversation with her. She acknowledged my run for the Board of Education. She mentioned there's a lot of issues on the school board level that need to be addressed. So naturally, I seized the opportunity to bring to her attention one big issue in Monroe Township, which is a lack of fair funding. She said, you know, the board came to meet with us about the funding issue back in January. We had someone who's really good at explaining the issues involving the funding formula. He seemed to really do a good job. They seemed pretty satisfied with his presentation and, I don't know, now all of a sudden, it's an issue again. So I started to break down for Senator Greenstein what I felt was a big fundamental flaw in the fair funding formula, which is the way the property values and the income is computed, especially in a town like Monroe Township where over half of the residents are senior citizens. And as I started to try to have an intellectual conversation with Senator Greenstein, she told me, why don't you write a letter? And I'll get that letter over to the guy I know that really knows this funding formula and he'll, he'll let you know whether your understanding of it is right or wrong. I said, well, what do you think of my understanding, Senator? I mean, am I not? All of a sudden then I was joined by two residents who likewise expressed their concerns about the fair funding formula. And she also advised them to write letters to her that she could pass on. So I think for me, my mind was pretty blown at that point, that Senator Linda Greenstein, who's been in the legislature for 20 years now, you know, doesn't really have a grasp on the fair funding formula that she can't articulate it herself. You know, I can understand a new legislator in Trenton who maybe could say, look, I wasn't there in 2008 when they made the fair funding formula, but she had already been in Trenton for eight years by that point. So this is not really a referendum against Linda Greenstein. I tried that about a year ago. This is really just about what is the school board doing as far as advocating for that fair funding? We have a committee meeting where we're talking about letter-writing campaigns and all these other failed attempts in the past to get funding. You know, I got a lot of flack for trying to compare Monroe Township's funding to Newark, City of Newark. And I wasn't really trying to specify anything specific about Newark other than that it's the largest school district in our state and it gets over $1 billion while Monroe Township gets $9 million. So I'd like to give a better example of Edison Township, where I grew up, which now this year will have $47 million, up from $36 million last year. That's $12 million, one-third increase in funding over the course of 12 months. And I'm going to read a quote from the superintendent in Edison who said that the increases have enabled our school district to dedicate money to capital and building projects to upgrade facilities and provide relief to our community to the many overcrowding issues that we have. Gee, that sounds very familiar. These are the same issues that I see a lot of residents in Monroe Township complain about. These are the same issues that we have right in front of us in a referendum in the upcoming year. I have people that talk to me about, why don't we have full-day kindergarten? And gee, Edison, who now has $12 million more, is bringing back full-day kindergarten to their district. So again, I don't understand why we only spend 30 seconds at every meeting talking about fair funding when all of our issues could be resolved with fair funding. Fair funding should not be something that's just, you know, a committee meeting, we talk about it every once in a while. It should be front and center, the biggest issue that is addressed by the Monroe Township Administration, Monroe Township School Board, the Monroe Township residents. And my only question is, what happened in January that was apparently so satisfactory? What was said at that meeting that was so satisfactory that we went another nine months without doing anything about it? Thank you.
Thank you. And we did go to Trenton. Ms. Fabiana was there, Dr. Lehman was there, I was there, Ms. Spearman was there, Ms. Arminia was there. And I can assure you, we did not walk into that meeting and ask to have the formula explained to us. We know the formula. We went in there discussing equalization aid and the issues around how that is calculated. And we asked for that to be reconsidered when they form this fair funding task force that has not gotten off the ground yet. It's very disappointing that we have been reading articles, information coming out from the governor's office, legislation being passed that says that they are creating a funding task force to evaluate the formula and to create changes to it. That has gone nowhere. What we asked for at that meeting was when they finally got that task force together, which sounded like it was going to be, you know, in the very near future, back in January, we asked for representation from Monroe Township to be on that, on that task force. We said, we would like to have representation that understands the flaws in the formula specific to Monroe Township and address that while they're creating a change to the formula. We were told, unfortunately, we'll only be legislators on that task force, but we will keep you informed of any changes that, you know, they are, they are making. Yes, you are correct. We do need to do more work. And I know we had discussed contacting Senator Greenstein and inviting her to an upcoming committee meeting. She did express to us that she was not in favor of coming to a public Board of Education meeting, but she would consider coming to a committee meeting, which I thought, you know, that is something, it's a first step in bringing her into our community to have these discussions. So I do think we need to do that as well. I agree with you wholeheartedly that we do need to get more funding here in Monroe Township. We have been fighting for more funding for the last 12 years that I have been advocating in this district. And you're 100% correct. If we got half of the funding that some of our surrounding districts got, we would be able to do so much more. I mean, we are currently looking at every single space inside of our buildings to create stopgap measures to address our overcrowding. Our referendum is, we need to go out to the, to the community and ask them to approve our referendum because we are at, we're at the end of the line. We can't kick the can any further down the road. We're at the end of the road. And unfortunately, we're not looking to build new schools. We're not looking to build a $250 million school being completely funded in Perth Amboy by the state. Imagine that. So yes, I understand your frustration as a taxpayer too because you look around districts, East Brunswick getting $33 million a year, South Brunswick getting $25 million or in that figure. We're getting nine. And those are districts surrounding us. Princeton has got, they, they met the standard or the threshold to get funding for a full-day kindergarten. Monroe doesn't. We do not, we can't apply for the grant because we don't meet the, we don't meet the requirements. So every avenue that we go at, grants, fair funding, school formula, we're at a disadvantage. So I agree with you. We do have to continue to push our legislators and do more as a community and as a district to fight to get our fair share of our funding. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, Monroe Township. I listened to the committee meeting where ECE was discussing the inclusion of special education students. I think that's fabulous. The only thing I would implore the administration and the board is that if we do that to ensure we have the proper supports. Because a lot of times you walk into places that say they can absolutely support special needs children and they actually can't. And to that point, I wanted to thank the administration and hopefully the board passes it. I see that finally, after four years of CPAG advocating, we have the RBTs, or Registered Behavior Technicians, on that agenda. For those that don't understand, these are specialized para professionals in the self-contained classrooms. It is very different to be a self-contained para than to be a para perhaps in an ICR classroom or a resource room. So thank you for including that, Mrs. Chanley, Dr. Lehman. We appreciate that. Mrs. Ruela, we've really long advocated for this because if we're starting to support these students better, we can bring more students into district. We don't have to send our students out of district and we can become a truly more inclusive environment where everybody is included in our numbers and our stats and everything. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is our Assistant Superintendent's report. Dr. Lehman?
Thank you. I'm going to make it brief. We had an outstanding student board member report that highlighted some of the things I was going to talk about. So they're always great, but she took some of my thunder, so I will just highlight a few other things. She mentioned something about Start Strong Testing. A footnote there, we're finishing the Start Strong Testing this week. We have some lingering absences in one of our schools, but outside of that, we should be wrapping that up. And that is our kind of beginning of the year Start Strong Assessment. That's a state assessment. I think the general feeling is we would like to move on from that assessment. It's not something we have a choice to give unanimously. Most of the or all of the major principals, teachers, associations have been advocating to use a localized assessment. We use the measure, measures of academic progress, the MAP testing. We certainly have been doing that for many, many years. We have longitudinal data on that. This assessment kind of emerged from COVID and our position is it's really a tool for a district that doesn't have something in place already. So we would like to see us move away from that in the future. And that's something I think we are all advocating for because it just takes away time from the beginning of the year, kind of students getting to know their teacher and kind of getting in the groove and swing of things. So the good news is we're finishing that up. That's the moral of the story. And the last thing I wanted to do is just say, our fall season for our high school athletics and middle school athletics is starting to come to an end. We've had some excellent seasons for many of our teams. And I just wanted to say thank you to and congratulations to all our student athletes. It's not easy to balance the academics and the athletics piece and they overwhelmingly do a tremendous job doing that. We have an outstanding coaching staff that will support the students. So just congratulations as we kind of phase out of our fall season and we start to prepare for our winter seasons. And that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is our Superintendent's report. Mrs. Chanley?
Thank you very much, President Skirby. And I had my thunder stolen twice now because I was going to reference. I was going to reference the outstanding job that our student board member did, but Dr. Lehman, thank you very much. So I will just start off by saying that I had, I wanted to make sure to thank Mr. Maralda as well as the graphic design teachers who assisted him in creating our visuals. I think they're outstanding. I think they give a really, a good picture, or a pun, a good picture. I did want to make one comment, though. The reason why there is no high school pictures is because the high school edition will be added on to the footprint that was put in place intentionally, and it will be in the back. So I did speak with Mr. Maralda and said, for purposes of Oktoberfest, which is my next comment, because we'd love you to join us. We're going to be at Oktoberfest, we're going to have a table, and we're excited about that. And that will be on October 23rd from 12 to 4 between the Mill Lake School and the Monroe Rec Center. So I did ask him, possibly maybe we could just get a shot, a picture of maybe the school, even maybe an aerial shot, and then can show where it's going to be added on to, because people want to know. Here's the middle school, here's Apple Goff, where's the high school? So I did want to make reference to that. I did want to also give a shout out to Mr., excuse me, to Dr. Parab. He asked, actually invited myself and Ms. Skirby over to the library this evening, which happened directly before our meeting, and it was a Sua Diwali presentation, and I do want to mention it because I think it's very important. You know, we're very fortunate whenever we can partner with any and all community groups. They add so much to the concept of community. It's not just about the school. We do not, we do not, we do not function in a vacuum. I always say success is always a team effort, and it's absolutely true. So all groups are welcome to reach out to us. I was able to, he had reached out to me previously, and I was able to assist him in just providing him access to be able to partner in the Sua Diwali, as it was explained to me, is basically an opportunity during the time of Diwali, which will be on Monday, to celebrate the Festival of Lights in a concept of giving back. And they did it through the organization of Can Drive. Basically, that's what it is. It's a fundraiser, but it's a can drive, and foods and essentials, and they surpassed their last year mark and poundage in the thousands as well as monetarily. And he did comment, and I thought it was important to say thank you to the board as well, because I am a representation of the board, that this was the first year that the school district partnered with the group to do it, and it was very, very exciting. So I think that was fantastic. If I can just allow that to transition to my next comment. So while we sat there and we got to hear, first of all, a beautiful voice of a young lady sing a beautiful song in the Indian language. It was absolutely beautiful. We also had an opportunity to hear all the children, I think one of them was like four or six, come up all the way to high school just to talk about what it meant to them. And I think it's very telling in a time where we're looking to be kind. You'll notice on the agenda, a lot of the programs that we're paying for and we're approving are about kindness, saying no to hate, stopping hate at the door. So I thought it's important that I do make this statement. So they also said that in addition to the Festival of Lights, the concept of Sua Diwali is really about bringing lightness and eliminating darkness. And some of the children actually commented on its good being important and to eliminate the evil. And I'm going to make a statement, I'm going to be as appropriate as possible, and I'm going to make this very short. There has recently been very, there has recently been information placed on Facebook, and I don't like to normally, I always say I don't do my job based on my Facebook, but because the public does read it, I do want to make this statement. There has been information that is not accurate. It is not factual, and it references some of the core, important people that work in the business office. One is my confidential secretary. She did give me permission to make that statement and to include her. False comments about pay, false comments about the jobs that they do, false comments about why, and different reasons why, and why they were paid, what they're paid. And I'm not at liberty to discuss anything because it is an issue of personnel, but I'm going to make this statement. We could not do what we do for the children of Monroe, myself as the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the acting business administrator, the board of education members, if I may include you, without the work, the perseverance, the diligence, the dedication of those individuals who are currently being attacked. So I will stop there and say, let us bring more lightness, and let us stop the darkness, and let us have some kindness. So I thank you. And please come out, it's going to be my first Oktoberfest, I'm very excited. So please come out and join us, and if you come, wear Monroe apparel. It's all about the spirit. So on that note, if I may, before I ask for our vote, I would like to wish well to two retirements. We currently have Ms. Norma Bamba, who is our security officer, security personnel here at the high school, and she's been here for many, many, many years, and she will be leaving us soon. And I am always excited to wish people well on their retirement because it is the next journey in their lives. Additionally, Ms. Patricia Sherman, who's one of our workstation specialists in the district, and Oak Tree? Oak Tree, Apple Goff. And I was very, very excited. When she made the appointment with me, I was like, why are you here? And, you know, I've had an opportunity to work with her, you know, in my role as vice principal and the principal, and she came personally to tell me, and I got to hug her, and I wish her an awesome, true retirement, because I know that it's very exciting for people, for whatever's going on in their lives to start that. So I did want to make note of that before I move forward with the agenda items, so I wanted to say thank you. So at this time, under a 10-member vote, it is recommended that the board approval the, excuse me, that the board approve the attached personnel items A through N.
Motion. Second.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Arminio.
Superintendent Chanley, very often at this meeting, we have an official enrollment count as of October 15th. Do we have that? It's not on this agenda.
That's correct. Ms. Allen and I actually had this conversation. So as you know, we are required to have an ASSA, and you can correct me if I make that error, Ms. Allen, an ASSA report, which is physically, I think it's very important to know what a big deal it is, so it's physically given to Mr. Feldman. He goes from school to school, and what happens is then the data gets all aggregated, and I do not believe we have that actual number yet because of the board agenda's time period, but let me acquiesce to Ms. Allen.
Yes, so it's not complete yet, the report, the ASSA report. We just received the registers, and we will go through them very carefully, and the report will be opened up in the state program sometime in the beginning of November, and...
Because we have to report that, right?
Yes.
Do we have a deadline to report that?
And we have until December 5th, I believe it is, to report it. So it will not be finalized, and it gets audited as well, so it will not be finalized until December 5th.
Okay, I know members of the public in the past have eagerly awaited the October dates so we can get the enrollment numbers. Okay, they'll have to wait then. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Ratner?
Just two quick questions. ASSA, what's that? Is that, what is that?
Application for state school aid?
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is just, I know that, I think it's Item J, mentions the virtual home instruction. I just wanted to confirm because I know that we're no longer required to document numbers for COVID and things of that nature. If a student is ill, do they let the school know? Like, I know, I went in when my daughter was sick, I put in the notes for Genesis that she was out and she was ill, and you could write in like specifics, but obviously right now, we're handling that separately than we would be handling other illnesses. So I was just curious, you know, how a parent would handle that if their student is testing positive for COVID, what their steps would have to be.
Sure. So the way it works is, we do not ask the question, does your child have COVID? When you report your child's illness, you would say, my child has COVID, my child has pink eye, my child has strep, so on and so forth. Because we currently still are under the direction of the state that has not changed with the six-day rule, 10-day, six-day, 10-day rule that has not changed, where that is not the same for any other illness. Every other illness is fever-free for 24 hours. What we do is, if you call your child that's sick, your child is sick, and home instruction would not come into play, but if you call your child that's sick for COVID, then it immediately goes directly with the same system that we've always had, where we then take the information, we ask specifically, did they test positive and then how many days out, or were they symptom-free, tested positive, or did they have symptoms, and then test positive, and the nurses do a fabulous job of that information. Then that information is then shared directly with the principal and the specific secretary in the schools that is designated, and then that gets the ball rolling of whether or not they are, not whether or not, so they are offered the home instruction, but there is a couple of different avenues. You offer the home instruction, if they say, yes, that's what we want, we try to secure a teacher as per the, I believe there was a resolution, within, I believe it was 48 hours. If we aren't able to do that, then a link goes up, and there are some parents that are saying, I do not want home instruction, I do not want a link, could you kindly ask the teachers that they're willing to give me the work? So that's something that's a little bit different. But other than that, we're following the same exact protocol that we've always followed because the state has not changed the quarantine date time.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no questions, so may we have a roll call, please? Ms. Bora?
Yes, to all.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Under a nine-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items O through AW.
Motion, we get a motion?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Tagley-Farah? Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Under a 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items A through I.
We get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Does anybody have any questions? All right, and we please have a roll call. Mrs. Tagley-Farah? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes, to all, except no on board goal number four. I think we're falling short of that goal already. We're going backwards, so I vote no on that.
So noted. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes, to all, except on Item D, I abstain.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under a nine-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached board action items J through R.
We have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, so may we have a roll call, please? Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
I have an old, the old agenda, so I just want to make sure. I believe I'm voting, I'm abstaining on the professional appointment A. Is that still Mr. Rubin? Or has that changed?
That's not the...
You're not, you're not, you're not there yet.
We're not there yet?
We're both...
Sorry, I'll wait.
No, that's the business administrators. So you vote yes on all?
You need your vote. I know, I'm looking. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Ms. President, that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is our business administrators' report. Ms. Allen?
It is recommended that board action items A through F be approved by consent roll call by a 10-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? Ms. Spearman?
Just one quick item on Item B for the bill list. I know there was that third amendment that came through for the $153.84. I don't see that on here, and I didn't want that to become a problem, I would go to deal with this later.
It's the addendums. Oh, so, the two addendums.
So just to think we can include that now, right? So it's a fun one.
It is further recommended that the previously submitted addendums...
Okay. It is further recommended that previously submitted addendums be approved by consent...
I mean, you spell out the $1,001,42, but then there's the additional $1,300 that's not included in that total, but...
So, Madam President, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Gregly, already.
All right, so the motion's been moved and seconded, but there's a proposed amendment, so my respectful suggestion, you can do a friendly amendment if the mover and seconder agree, the additional items for the bill is can be included with this roll call.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay.
There you go. Any other questions? No? Okay, may we have a roll call, please? Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Recuse on A and yes on everything else.
Ms. Arminio?
Abstain on A.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It is recommended that board action items G through H be approved by consent roll call by a nine-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? Okay, may we please have a roll call? Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. The next item on the agenda is the board president's report. So here's my report. Last week, the board negotiations committee met with the MTEA, that is the Monroe Township Education Association, where ground rules were, for negotiation were discussed. The next meeting will be November 29th, and contract proposals will be exchanged. On Monday, the board negotiations committee met with the MTSAA, that's the Monroe Township Supervisors and Administrators Association. Ground rules for negotiations were set and agreed upon and signed by the representatives from both groups. The MTSAA gave their proposal for changes to their contract to the board negotiations committee to review and deliberate on. The next meeting will take place November 30th. I'm looking forward to attending the New Jersey School Boards Association Conference next week in Atlantic City. I've reviewed the agenda for the conference and plan to give an update next month on the sessions that I attend, and I would ask that other board members who are attending to do the same at our next meeting. The district does cover the cost to attend this conference, however, I did want to let the public know I've opted to pay for my own accommodations and meals while I'm there. Earlier tonight, as Mrs. Chanley said, we had the pleasure of attending the Seawood Diwali event at the library and recognized our students who collected an incredible amount of food for our local pantries. This year, they collected 22,000 pounds of food and collected $1,452. It was an amazing accomplishment, Mrs. Chanley and I both spoke, we congratulated the students, and, you know, I shared with them a personal story of how, you know, growing up, that I did not come from a wealthy family, and there were times when my mother had to take food donations. And I wanted to let them know how much their volunteering and their community service actually does mean to the lives of people that they may not know, and that it was an incredible, incredible service that they were doing and bringing together their community, and we listened to how some of the younger children said it was the first time that they had to go door-to-door and ask for donations, and they were nervous, but they were so happy that they did it, and they were so glad to see how giving people were, and it just really was an incredible event there tonight to really showcase community, because that's what we are, we are one community, and we need to come together and, and do exactly what they said. Bring lightness to darkness and be there for each other. I also want to congratulate all of our athletes who won their GMC games this week, including our field hockey team, girls soccer, boys soccer, volleyball. I want to wish them well in the next round of their GMC games. Congratulations to our freshman girls volleyball team for winning the 2022 freshman GMCs. Girls tennis had an amazing win in the NJSIA doubles tournament a couple weeks ago. Our band students had a very successful home show last weekend. Our seniors are having their senior night this Friday night at 7:00 PM on the new field. If I've missed any athletes or teams, I apologize, but I just want to wish the very best of luck to our fall Falcon athletes as their seasons do begin to wrap up and GMCs and states begin. I'd also like to wish our senior class the best of luck as they begin to apply for colleges this fall. It's an exciting time as our students start showcasing their academic success, their many talents and activities that set them apart from students applying from other high schools. I look forward to hearing the list of all the colleges and trade schools that our students are accepted into. Seeing our Falcons leave the nest and fly to success is what we are all about. Educating our students is the forefront of what we are here for, and I'm proud of our district and thankful for everyone who worked so hard to make this the best district to be a part of. Finally, I'm looking forward to the Oktoberfest this coming Sunday, where the district will have a table and hand out information on the upcoming referendum. The administration has put a lot of effort and time into this referendum presentation, and I know we want everyone in the community to understand exactly what the plans are and all of the details, so I please ask everyone to come out and stop by the district's table this Sunday. And that concludes my report. The next item on our agenda is other board business. Anybody has anything? Mrs. Belko?
Yeah, I just wanted to go on the backs of everybody, this fall sports season has been a great one for all the sports, including our Unified Soccer Team. I was in attendance today at the Unified Soccer game in the back of the high school. We played against Perth Amboy. I think we won, I didn't count, I don't know, but I know we scored a lot of goals, they scored some goals, but the whole point was, they all had a great time. And the best thing that I, that I have to comment about, about that game was that all of, there were, I want to say about 10, 15 students who came out to watch the Unified Players play, and the Unified Players were amazingly happy to see them there, they, they go to school with them, they're their friends, they, you know, it was absolutely amazing thing. So I also want to give a plug to our Unified Travel Soccer Team, who will be playing this Sunday at Mercer County Park, by the soccer field, so it's not like by the boathouse, Mercer County Park is, is like a state unto itself. So if you, if you want to go and see some really great sports and sportsmanship-like conduct, it's an amazing thing to go see. They'll be playing against two different schools, and they'll have, you know, they'll have a great time, you'll see all the Special Olympics flags, so if you see those, that's where the soccer's being played, and if you see some school buses, that's where soccer's being played. And our team has been, some of the members of our team are new to it, I'll give a little plug to my daughter, she's been a member of the travel team for soccer here for almost six years now, and she absolutely loves it, she's, the coach told me today, she's got grit and resilience, and I'm very proud of her, and I'm proud of the Unified Team, and I'm proud of the fact that we have these Unified Programs here. And also, senior night, Friday night, the dance team, we have Unified Dance Team that dances with the dance team out on the field, and please, I don't, whoever's audio guys, please make sure the dance team can hear their music through the whole show, that's just one thing, I just ask, please, let's make sure that they can hear, because the music, every, the last few times I saw them, the music stopped in the middle of their show, which is kind of hard, but they did it, they continued to dance. But I also want to say, I agree, it's the season of light, we're coming into, you know, light, you know, from darkness to light, I'm not sure any religion that doesn't go from darkness to light, and we need to, we need more light in our lives, and, and I, you know, you know, I think, you know, we have Diwali coming on the 24th, and, and, you know, my daughter is, you know, the kids are excited. It's dark, we need somebody move so we can get some light. So that's all I have before I blubber on, thank you very much, and have a great conference next week, I will not be there.
Thank you. Ms. Bora?
I just want to piggyback on what Ms. Belko said, I watched my first unified basketball game last season, last year, and having been a sports mom on the sidelines all my life, that was the most exciting, most heartwarming game to have watched, and so I second her that, if every, at every opportunity that presents, if you are looking for watching a sport, you should, and we have that right in the backyard, and coming winter season, we'll be having Unified Basketball in there, please make the time to come watch and cheer for them, it's amazing. And I also want to add that last year, when Ms. Dillon retired, we felt like we were leaving big shoes to fill. I'm happy to say that the teacher, and I may be wrong, Ms. Myers? Myers? Is that the new? Is doing an amazing job, she's filling big shoes, but she's doing it beautifully, and our program thrives, continues to thrive. Just one respectful correction on the word, SEVA, so it's SEVA Diwali, not, so it's SEVA, and it's an acronym for organization, but it literally means service, it means service. So I just wanted to-
How do you say it?
SEVA. Se-va. Se-va, yes. And it's a Hindi word that means service, and thank you to the school district for supporting it, because it honestly is our children going door-to-door, and they are, like you said, we are teaching this through expensive programs in school, and you're only reinforcing it outside, so thank you very much for the support.
My pleasure.
Welcome. Anyone else? Ms. Ratner?
Yes, so first, I honestly cannot remember this far back, I'm losing my memory, I think, but I believe it was after the last board meeting that we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony, is that correct? And I just want to say I really enjoyed being out there with fellow board members, fellow township council members, and, you know, really celebrating with the school community. It was really nice to see all that school spirit, there was, there were a lot of people there, I think my kindergarten son now wants to play football, he was really enjoying it. My daughter still wants to be in band, which I can't really argue with. And then, so I just wanted to, you know, mention that. I also wanted to state that I really like the fact that we have these grant-funded assemblies that are going towards social emotional learning, I think that's really important, and so thank you to those people who were able to find them, and thank you to administration for supporting those assemblies happening. I had attended the Green Fair as well on this past Saturday, I think it was, can't keep this straight, where I, first of all, wanted to say that I had seen a number of students with various clubs or maybe outside organizations, but participating, and so it was really nice to see that taking part, you know, and then I also happened to see Senator Greenstein, and I sort of just, you know, without going into my role as a board member, just said, you know, we really need more support for our schools. I actually ran into Mr. Elias about like 10 seconds after I ran into Senator Greenstein, so it was pretty funny. And then finally, and you know, we mentioned the Festival Lights, Diwali, my daughter had actually brought up how amazing it is that Diwali and Hanukkah and Christmas all have these lights, and so she's actually said she wanted to get together with her friends who celebrate one of each, they can all experience it. But, you know, I totally agree, and I'd actually written something, and I'll try to keep it really brief, but I also wanted to just say, I know, Mrs. Chanley, you always mention your motto, which is success is a team effort, and I really appreciate that statement, I always have. You know, there's been a significant amount of tension and stress surrounding the board, and it's on and off social media, I've always hated the idea of sides, whether, you know, Democrat, Republican, whatever, but nobody's perfect, and that includes myself, and I'm not going to say that I'm perfect and everyone else is awful. However, I really think, in order to improve, we need to move forward from the problems, the division, the drama, for the good of the students and the community. We have so many major problems to overcome that we don't have control over, right? We have overcrowded schools, infrastructure issues, funding problems and stuff, and I really feel like if we could put all of our efforts together, working with each other, with the town to speak to legislators, regardless of whether they're Democrats, independents, or Republicans, to address our major issues, we'll really be better off, you know, instead of tearing each other down, there's that saying that there's two heads is better than one, imagine what 30,000 heads together could do. So I really just wanted to say that, and I know it's, you know, been brought up, and I really think that we need to, as much as we can, put what's happened in the past in the past and move forward, because I really think we'll only benefit from it. And then finally, just two quick things, I'm also looking forward to attending the workshop next week. I had gotten a chance to go over some of the sessions, I'm really looking forward to some of them, including, which is improving transportation in your district, and also there's one about like successful referendums and things of that nature, which I really think could help us. And then the Fall NJSBA Delegate Assembly is going to take place on November 19th, I think that's after our next meeting, I think our meeting is on the 16th, so I'll bring it up in more depth then, but President Kirby, if it's okay with you, when the resolutions come out, if I can send them to our board, so that way if anybody has any questions, I can bring them to the assembly, that would be wonderful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Arminio?
Okay, I have a public service announcement that I have, I have often talked about the master plan and what that's going to do to build out Monroe, to increase enrollment, to put Monroe into a very high-density, almost urban-like community. It goes along with fair funding, it is not the same, fair funding to me has been rhetorically political over the last 20 years, they're not listening, and, and for anyone to say that we don't understand the funding formula and that we were satisfied with that meeting is incorrect. We were happy that we got the meeting, but it didn't, you know, we were told that our representatives will come and help us ask for money from our community, that, that is not satisfactory. So the fair funding issue, while we have been going that route for 20 years, and I don't mean to put it down, we need to continue, however, the big issue is the master plan. That is where we are going to exhibit, going to experience the high density, high enrollment, and the difficulties of housing our children. So next, and I've, I've said this, you know, I keep telling everybody when it's happening, the next meeting of the planning board, which they are putting out, again, the master plan, and the master plan is on the township website, is October 27th at 6:30. It is the, it is actually a public hearing for the master plan, please look at it, or just come out and say they have got to start curtailing the impact that these developments are having on us. And this whole thing about affordable housing, and we, yes, we have all this affordable housing, please, that is also a rhetorical, political issue. We have an obligation in this community to do about, about 5,000 homes, I mean, if people think that that's not going to impact our schools, that's, we're going to be swirly informed. So this is an opportunity for the members of this community, for all of the talk about fair funding and going to our legislators, come on the 27th, next week, Thursday at 6:30, to our own representatives in this town and talk about what they're doing, because this is probably going to be the last build-out. Every inch of soil in Monroe is probably going to be built on after this referendum. So if you really want to talk to your, your officials, let's do it on the local level, it's our backyard, it's our turn to tell them, they should re-revise the master plan and maybe not approve it or not send it to. So what's going to happen is the planning board's going to recommend this to our township council, and the township council is going to probably approve it if, if we don't get together and show our objections. So I implore everyone to do it, and I ask all of the members of, of this board, these are our children's future, just talking about fair funding is meaningless if we have all this build-out. So if anyone can attend that meeting, I will be there at 6:30, I hope everybody else is. It is our future, it's probably the last opportunity for us to make a dent, and please don't say, everything is already determined, there's no reason for me to get involved. There absolutely is, and you can't imagine what one voice can do, and all of our voices together will make far more difference locally than we will at the state, I can assure you of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Ratner?
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm going to do my absolute best to be there, but I wanted to find out if there are a number of board members that attend, does it matter if there would be six there, or, because it's not a school-related?
Where's our attorney?
If we're not, if we're not conducting business?
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it is not a meeting of us, we will, we will be present, but we're not taking any action, but I would rely on Mr. Gagliardi when, yeah, but I mean, this is really where our voices are heard, this is where we can say to our elected officials, don't do this under, under the proposals that you have, because the builders have already spoken to them, and the builders have told them everything that they want, it's a wish list for the, for the developers, and we pay the price, they make, get, make the profit, and we pay the price, our children pay the price, our taxes pay the price, all talk about fair funding is minuscule compared to what will happen when this town gets built out, to the extent that this new master plan is saying, so it's on us, folks, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our next item on the agenda, which is our public forum, this is where you could speak to anything that you would like to address with the board. You have four minutes, please state your name and your municipality.
Hi, Abir Khan for Forest Lane. I'm a senior here at the high school, and before I even get into what I want to say, I just want to thank you guys for the time, I know it's really hard being here late at night, having multiple meetings a month. Special thank you to Dr. Lehman and Ms. Gazalabura, who have been special in just helping me throughout this entire process. So what I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about is a cricket team here at Monroe Township High School. I understand that it was brought to the committee curriculum meeting on September 14th, 2022, by Mr. Dowling, who I've been working in close proximity with, with this project, and I understand that there were some logistical concerns arisen by the board during that meeting, which I hope to address during this meeting, I watched back, I, I heard everything that you guys need or want to hear, and I have answers for you guys. But before I get into that, I would like to get into a couple of things. First is that I worked with Mr. Dowling on sending out a survey to the entire MTHS student body, in which, it was a Google form that asked one simple, two simple questions, one is what grade are you in, and two is if Monroe Township High School had a cricket team for spring of 2023, would it be something you are interested in? We had 148 students say that this is something that they'd be interested in, this is a massive movement that people want to be engaged in. And I have a list of all the students here, highlighted in green, that said yes, white is no, I'm just going to pass one on each side, you guys can pass around, take a quick look.
Thank you.
So let me paint a quick picture, 2027 is the Cricket World Cup. It's going to be held in the USA, which means that the USA automatically qualifies. Captain of the USA team, Monroe Township High School alumni, as it is going to be the first cricket team in the entire USA, and from that, we will have Monroe Township High School being listed, not in just the USA, but every major country in the world, every single European Union nation, India, Australia, New Zealand, they will know about us, and they will know how we were the first to be pioneering this movement. I have, I'm very passionate about this project, I had been growing up playing cricket for hours a day alone, and now we have the resources to exemplify this into a program here at the school, and, you know, I, it's just something that I love, I'm writing my college essay about it, I want to address any concerns that you guys have. I understand that you guys wanted an advisor to go with this team, so I have found that, I have discussed with, with Ms. Sima Taparia of the high school, she is more than willing to help me out, I know you guys discussed adjunct coaches, we have already had the adjunct coach in question submit all the paperwork that is necessary, so that's already in progress. So everything is in line for this to be approved for, as a program here at the high school. It won't cost the board a dime, everything will be completely parent-funded, I have networked with local cricket affiliates who would be willing to sponsor all the equipment for this program, it wouldn't cost you guys anything, and it would only do good for a student body, and it would open athletics to a demographic of the student body that previously weren't able to access athletics before. And so with, with that, thank you, thank you. With that, I would like to answer any questions that you guys did have regarding this program.
I don't think we had any questions for you this evening, but I do want to commend you for coming here and giving us this presentation, I know it's going to be discussed, I believe, again, at a future curriculum committee meeting, and I thank you so much for coming and giving this presentation to the board. I think it's wonderful that you came out here tonight, and you've sat here for many hours, and you do come across very passionate for it, and I think that is great. And I think that we will be able to have a great conversation back at curriculum, and hopefully we will move that forward.
Wonderful, I would, I would love to see this, you know, be moved forward as something even for this year, in terms of the breakdown for students that responded to the survey, it's been pretty even, 25% all across the board for each grade, with a little bit of variation, so, you know, this is something I would love- So, you know, this is something I would love to see for everybody. And, you know, if we can get it done as soon as possible, that'd be awesome. I really appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you, and we appreciate you. We appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
And investing.
You can keep, you can keep that.
Investing in your student body, and polling them, and bringing something to them. You are, you are an inspiration to them.
Thank you.
Bringing forth, you know, what they see as a need and a desire to have here at the high school, and being their spokesperson. So, I commend you for coming here and doing that.
I really do appreciate that, thank you.
And good luck on your college applications.
Thank you, thank you. Also, that being said, I would like to bring up something that a gentleman said earlier at the first public forum about moving the general public forum up in the board meetings. Because, I mean, me as a student here in the high school, it's really hard for me to stay here until 10:00 PM to give a presentation like this, and I know I'm over time, I'm really sorry. But I do think that is something that should be addressed by the board, because that will also give us access to our student body to be even more involved in our local municipality, which I think is just as important.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bernadette, and I just would like to ask the board, where is our status with regards to the updated health guidelines with the updated referendum that was signed by Governor Murphy? Like, where are we in that? Is that along within the discussion in the future curriculum?
Dr. Lehman?
Sure. Good evening. So, we are in the process of continually updating and reviewing. We haven't changed anything in terms of our health curriculum. So, in the future, it will certainly be through a curriculum committee meeting first, that's where it'll be presented and shared, and then it would come to the full board for approval, just like the science curriculum on the agenda tonight.
Okay. I'm just, would like to bring it to attention to the board that I belong to a Calvary Chapel in Old Bridge, and for the Old Bridge Board of Ed, they have already voted down. It was unanimous decision against all the health ed updated guidelines that was set forth by the state. And to me, it's an alarming fact for us as parents when we saw the details of what is in the curriculum. I wonder, is it okay for me to forward to you, all board members, what information I have with what is inside those curriculum? That way, you will have time to do research, to see what is in there, and determine for yourselves what is the proper trajectory that you will all be deciding the future for our kids. Is it okay for me to forward for you the information?
You can forward whatever information you like to the board, but what you have to understand is, in Monroe Township, we have not changed our curriculum. Districts have updated their curriculum. I have had several conversations with Mrs. Shanley and Dr. Lehman, and we have not changed any curriculum. We have not put in anything that you're reading on social media that has created angst amongst parents.
And division, as well.
And division, yes. So, I know that I have asked several times, I know over the summer, because there was a perception that curriculum had to change for September. And we have not changed our curriculum documents. We meet the standard set forth by the Department of Education and the governor, but we have not, we have not changed it. And Dr. Lehman, if you want to help me explain it, I know I'm not doing it.
We do have to, we do have to make changes and amendments, but we are doing so, and we're meeting the needs of our community. We've spoken on the phone before, I believe, so, several times. So, as I explained before, we will take the standards. The standards are like a baseline requirement. There's a tremendous amount of other information out there. When these first were initially publicized, lessons and things were shared. No one tells us what lessons to teach, no one tells us, outside of the broad parameters that the state gives us, how we do it in Monroe. Which is why we are taking this time to make sure we meet the needs of the community. And the staff, the teachers have engaged in the writing process for this. Administratively, we're taking a look at it. And as the school year started, other districts that have already implemented certain things are sharing feedback, and tweaking, and helping other districts that are still going through the process, and you mentioned another district, and, you know, the district perspective's a little different than what you shared. So, I think there's a perception piece, but when it comes to kind of sharing where we're going to go with these, which could be several months down the road, we would certainly lay it out in plain English. We're not, you know, our curriculum documents, as they stand today, and as they will be revised, are available on our website, as we, you know, we showed you. And, you know, we will not be, you know, hiding anything, not sharing anything, but our goal is to make sure we take, as we spoke, a clinical approach to things. And, you know, many of the things that are in the quote-unquote "changes" are already embedded in our curriculum documents. We're already teaching a lot of that, a lot of the content there. I think, you know, there's not a lot of changes, I shouldn't say not a lot, there are tweaks that we will make, but again, we will put them in a way that we can communicate them effectively. And we've said from the beginning, it's an inclusivity piece, it's a tolerance, acceptance piece, when it comes to some of the gender pieces and things like that. So, and then we talk about the family life topics, and those are, those are kind of tiered at certain grade bands.
Yes.
Which we already have that topic kind of taught throughout the different grade bands. And again, in those specific areas, there's very little that's changed. But again, we will share things out and frame it in a way that the public totally understands it, and, you know, we can move forward with it.
If there are any changes in the updated health ed guidelines, will the parents be informed?
Yeah, the guidance has not changed, and any state guidance, that would be massive news. Based on all the news that's out there now, that would not go uncommunicated, and certainly we wouldn't, we would communicate whatever is appropriate from our lens as well.
Okay. On the last note, I wonder if, for the public forums, I would agree with, if we can move it up? Because should a time come that the health ed curriculum is up for discussion, and we have invited a lot of parents who joined in, it's a way to encourage them to show up. Because this way, we're in the last boat, it's like everybody's tired, nobody wants to talk. It's sort of like, it's not working based on what you said, that you welcome public forum, you welcome transparency, you want parents to come. If you want parents to show up, then you've got to change it up, that a public forum has to be first, in the front, first hour first. Then, we can just be dismissed earlier at least. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And just to note, when we do have discussions in our committees, you can speak at the first public forum on that, as that is part of the agenda item. So, as you're saying, if you bring, if you've heard at a curriculum committee meeting the discussion, and you know that the board will be taking action or discussing it at the meeting, that is something that you would be able to come to the first public forum as it stands now. But as I said, I would ask our policy chair to consider it for an agenda of a policy meeting, because currently, the policy as it stands is the first public forum is for agenda items. But you should know, and for anybody here who are watching, our committee meetings are on the agenda. So, anything that's discussed in the committee meetings, if you want to address, you can address that at the first public forum. All right, thank you so much.
Can I just say something real quick? Jamesburg, we do it the same way, too. So, it's not just Monroe.
Thank you.
So, it's probably a standard thing that most boards follow, is that it's the agenda items, and then public, you know, open public at the end. It's not just Monroe.
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Linda Bezowski. I live in Monroe, in Rossmore. I started out with three questions, but unfortunately, it expanded. The first one is a little confusing, and it's a statement that Mrs. Shanley made regarding the referendum. It was our understanding from Mr. Tagg that we were putting 20 classrooms on the high school, and 20 classrooms on the middle school. And yet, this evening, Mrs. Shanley, you said we were doing 17 on each of those buildings. So, now I'm a little confused. That's the first question. Second question is, in August, Mrs. Kirby, you stated that the survey results would be published, that were taken, the survey that was taken this summer. When I looked on the website at 5:19 this afternoon, there was still no information, which leads me to another question, because I wanted to go back to be sure I was using the correct board meeting date in terms of asking you the question. Is there some reason that the minutes do not include the answers to the questions that those of us in the public come up and ask? That would be very helpful, because when people are asking questions that they are thinking about, or that other members of the public may have, we're not getting the benefit of your replies, which are very helpful most of the time, in the minutes. So, that's something that I wish you would consider doing. The fourth question is on the website, on the left-hand side, in the blue section, where all the topics are listed. I don't know how far down the list it is, there's a title, a topic called, "Ask the Governor to Support New School Funding." That's the name of the item. And it's a proposed letter that someone unstated is recommending that we, as citizens, may send to our legislators to advise our need for more funding here in the township. My question is, was there some particular reason that the political affiliations were noted in parentheses for Governor Murphy, Senator Greenstein, and Assemblyman Benson? Who cares what party they belong to in terms of asking for funding? And the last thing, I just will make a comment about, that was addressed earlier by, I believe, by Mrs. Shanley. The item on Facebook that caused such furor yesterday, I guess, and today, it was my understanding, and I printed it out, because it's like, this is pretty bad. My understanding was that it was reported at a board meeting, these salary changes for people in the business office. I certainly have no disrespect for anyone in our business office. I just am a little surprised at some of these pay increases, because I sure never got payer increases like that. So, those are my questions and my comment. Thank you.
All right, well, I will answer what I can, and then I will ask Mrs. Shanley.
Okay, thank you.
The survey results on the website, we can, most certainly, I know that we were supposed to put them up, we can ask IT to put that document up there.
Okay.
And maybe we could even email it out to you as well.
Thank you.
I believe we have your email address. The minutes, I know myself and Ms. Arminio, for many years, have advocated for verbatim minutes. It's something that we can maybe, again, discuss at a policy committee meeting, but we don't have verbatim minutes here. So, the minutes are a reflection of what is, the essence of what is asked, or the comments of public forum.
Right.
So, that is why they are not detailed with answers, and you'll see, it's not even a verbatim of what you're asking for or saying.
Right.
And that is something that I know that, like I said, myself and Ms. Arminio and some other board members have advocated for verbatim minutes. As far as the letter on the website, I know that is probably dating back at least two or three years. I guess we should probably look at that letter and update it. Maybe we should take that down and revise it, and maybe that's something that we can look at in the Community Engagement Committee, revising that letter and putting something else back out there.
Okay.
And the last one that you mentioned, all salary increases are board-approved.
I know.
And the salary increases that were put out there, you know, there were increases, when we had put our business administrator on suspension, we had to fill that role with an acting business administrator. We have Ms. Allen, who has not only been doing her job as assistant business administrator, but she's also picked up the entire job seamlessly, and not missed a beat for this district as the acting business administrator. Obviously, this board felt it important to compensate her for that, and that was approved. The comments that are made on Facebook that Mrs. Shanley was referring to were absolutely horrifying and disgusting to see written about our staff. Accusing the board of hush money to somehow pay off employees to keep quiet about the business administrator is absurd, and it's outrageous, and there's no place for that type of hate in our community. Our employees do not deserve what is being written about them by fake profiles on a disgusting page that pretends to be about education. That is nothing but abuse and hate for our board members and our district employees. And it is so upsetting to read what was put out there today. The salaries are board-approved, the increases were board-approved.
Right.
Mrs. Shanley's confidential secretary was a secretary in the district. The confidential secretary to the superintendent had retired, not because of Mrs. Shanley or myself, that was, you know, before. And the new confidential secretary to the superintendent applied for the job and filled the role, and yes, she was compensated for her new role in the district. It's not, this board personnel reviewed it, it came to the full board, it was voted on unanimously by the board to approve. So, I don't know what you find shocking about those.
I was just surprised.
But the comments are what's shocking, the comments are what were addressed by Mrs. Shanley. And it really is upsetting. If you think that people are not reading that, and are not considering not applying to Monroe Township, you'd be fooling yourself. And that is not because of this board, and it is not because of this superintendent. It is because what is being put out there, misrepresenting this school district. We have our students achieving high achievements, working and going to great colleges, being highly successful, and we are doing them a disservice by putting out that type of hate. Because we will not retain the staff that we have here if they're going to continue to be abused the way they're being abused on social media, and we're not going to attract the best that we can, because nobody wants to come and be abused like that by their community. So, you know, those salaries that you have listed there, I'm sure they are correct. That wasn't what the questions were about. If you have any other questions about, you know, personnel issues, you can reach out and ask, but everything that has been approved by this board was unanimously approved.
No, and we discussed, Mrs. Kirby, we discussed when Ms. Allen was promoted to her acting position, that was a question I asked at a board meeting a couple of months ago, which was explained to me, I understand that. And I'm not saying that the board doesn't have the right to change salaries, of course you do, of course. But I do want to not leave the podium without an answer to my 17 or 20 question.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
So, and I also do want to make a statement that the Oprah Secretary's salary is incorrect, is actually half of that.
I don't know, I didn't read it.
Well, you made the statement that it was taken out of the board minutes, it's incorrect, so I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
And that regarding the restructuring of the Technology Department, because this is public knowledge, Dr. Lehman's in charge of that, and we had budgeted an amount for an additional position, and instead, Mr. Feldman, thinking out of the box, took that amount of money, restructured the entire department, and then that is where those salaries came from. So, I do think it's very disheartening when I have to work with people who are emotionally distraught by the lack of respect in which they feel they're treated. I mean, I'm abused on a regular basis, but that's okay, because, you know, I'm front and center, and I took this job knowing what I was getting into, and I'm still going to continue to do what's best for kids, so I'm okay with it. But when I work with these people that I find very endearing, it is very upsetting. And there were erroneous comments on there, because Ms. Tagliafaro, who I've spoken with personally, who's sitting here, did not get a raise, and instead, she got compensated appropriately for being the board secretary, which Mr. Gagliardi did approve, that she does have the credentials, thank you, Mr. Gagliardi, and she is permitted to sit in the role that she permits, that she's currently in, and she does get paid appropriately for the time that she puts in. So, that was a little bit of a concern. So, I do need to correct you, if I may, everything that was on there is not correct.
And I don't know, I have no frame of reference.
Well, that's why I thought of this. But regarding, I will not speak for Mr. Tagg, but I will tell you, to my recollection, he has never said, to my knowledge, to my recollection, and the reason why I'm going to look at Ms. Bora, is because Ms. Bora is the reason why there was such a major change, thank you again, and I keep on saying that, and it's probably recorded. 17 classrooms, we didn't do it on purpose, it was bizarre that it worked to being even. 17 classrooms to the middle school, and 17 classrooms to the high school. Originally, it was six classes to the high school, and 30-something classes to the middle school, and then there was, and please don't quote me, because I may be incorrect, approximately, I may be in error, if you check. don't quote me, because I may be incorrect, approximately, I may be in error, if you check, if you check me. So I don't know where you came up with twenty. I mean, I apologize that Mr. Tagg is not here, but I can say at ninety-nine percent certainty, he never said twenty. He's always said seventeen.
I do know that, that we took classrooms that were originally allocated to the high school and moved them over to the middle school.
No, you have it reversed.
Okay, but I know we, we changed the configurations one to the other, but I thought the number was twenty.
No, it's seventeen.
And that's what I wanted to confirm, because I'm telling people that they need to support this referendum.
That's wonderful.
Which I certainly am supporting. And I want to give them the correct information.
That's fantastic. Yes, it is seventeen and seventeen.
All right.
And, and if you look, you can see that as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Dan Finney, I'm actually an Aberdeen resident. And I found out about the curriculum issue through going through the, the meetings at, in my township. And then my youngest son happens to go to school in Old Bridge, and so I ended up attending board meetings with Old Bridge, and learned a lot about what is coming here with the, the curriculum. And I just wanted to, I have a couple friends in Munro Township, my nine-year-old son, you know, is a friend, and, and I found out the status that you haven't approved the state guidelines or adopted new curriculum. And so I wanted to take the opportunity, first of all, to thank you for the hard work you do, because, you know, it really is a commitment, whether you're administrators or whether you're board members or teachers, it is a big commitment. And my mom was a teacher, and I served thirty years in the military, and people are thanking me for my service all the time. But when I see local, you know, servants doing the work you're doing, I really appreciate it. What I want to say about the, the curriculum is, number one, that, you know, I applaud you, that you've taken a very careful and deliberate approach. So you're in an enviable position to be able to see what other townships have done, and how they're addressing this, and as they learn a little bit more about it. What, the other thing I want to share is that, in the process of attending the, the public meetings for the two other townships, it really became clear that there is a natural tendency to try to gloss over what the real issues are, and, and to think that the state guidelines are benign, and not, not very small changes to the curriculum. However, when you dig and peel the onion, it's, that's not really the case. And what you, alls you have to do is look at who was pushing the legislative effort, and what the intent of that legislative effort was regarding the LGBTQ agenda and, and movement, really. So a lot of words with good meaning have been usurped, and don't really represent what the, what is intended, and, and what they want to usher in to our schools and our public education. And I just, I hope that people be more aware and careful to assign the proper meanings to, to words, and to not obfuscate the, the issue wherein there's an effort to blur the lines of genders, and, you know, to think that if you don't embrace this, that somehow that you're not inclusive, or that you don't, you know, support diversity and kindness, and some of those type of things. So again, as you take a closer look at it, you know, you'll see what some of the school districts have embraced regarding age appropriateness of material, and also the fact that there's an effort in, or interpretation that it is to be put into the broader curriculum, language arts and other, other things like that, and how that impacts these kids as they grow up in the school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is a closed session. Be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Township of Munro hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJ SA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying, matters protected by.
Excuse me, we still have a meeting going on.
Matters protected by attorney-client privilege, and personnel matter. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Thank you. We will be in closed session probably for about a half an hour. Okay, we are back from closed session. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum for closed session items. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We will now adjourn the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, thank you.